...business philosophies, it was never going to work as a partnership.
Jason Schreier is the author of Play Nice: The Rise, Fall, and Future of Blizzard Entertainment. It's good to be Jason. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much for having me, Scott.
And you're listening to Here and Now.
Hey, this is Steve Inskeep. One of the things you can count on from NPR and this station, we've got your back when it comes to reporting the news, bringing you facts you can count on. And one thing this station counts on is contributions to keep it going. You can help by donating a vehicle you no longer need, which is free to you, easy to do, and could mean hundreds of dollars' worth of support. Thanks.
To donate your vehicle, go to radioiq.org. And thanks.
The world takes you outside your borders and connects you with the most important events happening all across this big blue marble.
We introduce you to memorable people whose stories will stay with you for a lifetime. I'm Marka Werman.
And I'm Carolyn Beeler, global news and inspiring voices that will keep you on top of the world.
Listen each weekday.
You can hear the world Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Midi Health, committed to providing a supported path to symptom relief for women experiencing perimenopause and menopause, offering personalized virtual care. Learn more at joinmidi.com.
It's Here and Now. How would you like to take a step into dinosaur history? More than 150 million years ago, a dinosaur, longer than a school bus, tromped through a squishy riverbed in southwest Colorado. Well, its footprints stayed there, frozen in time, as the Rocky Mountains rose up beneath them and the dinosaurs went extinct. Well, you can now visit these prints if you can make the hike. Colorado Public Radio's Stina Sieg has the story.
The longest continuous dinosaur trackway in the world is hidden just outside the tiny mountain town of Eurae. And it wasn't discovered by paleontologists, but by a group of boys looking for adventure. It was 1958.
Our parents would say, "Go out and play."
A very different time, says Rick Trujillo.
I had no idea where we went. And nobody gave it a thought in those days.
The boys explored the spider web of trails surrounding Eurae, so enveloped by mountains that it's dubbed "The Switzerland of America." That's how they stumbled across what looked like a series of potholes that seemed too evenly spaced to be the result of random erosion.
So he said, "Those have to be dinosaur tracks." And turns out, we were right, long, long ago.
Trujillo was 10. Now 76, he's today's trail guide, and not just for me.
I'm Dr. Julia McHugh. I'm the Director of Paleontology for the Museums of Western Colorado.
McHugh says this dino trackway is one of only a handful
where you see a 270-degree turn of an animal just turning around and deciding, "Nope, going the other way."
And to visit this marble, you gotta work for it.
10:18, we're starting our climb.
A two-mile track up the Silver Shield Trail, and I mean up. The path is like a steep luge, covered in little rocks threatening to slide you down. It's also gorgeous, with spruce pine and juniper providing sporadic shade and vibrant wildflowers popping through tufts of grass. Trujillo, a previous winner of the Hard Rock 100 Ultra Marathon, is not even winded. So how well, how well do you know this trail?
I guess I know as well as the street of Eurae. At least I've been hiking it most of my life.
Visiting the tracks and in the last decade digging them out from a blanket of pine needles and moss, Trujillo only told one other person, a college professor he knew. But slowly, word spread, and in 2020, a researcher wrote to Anita McDonald, whose late father, Jack Charles, owned the land, to ask if he could study the tracks.
I had no idea that they were there. No one else in the family had any idea either.
McDonald, who now lives in Ohio, says the family spent much of their summers on these few tucked-away parcels, her dad's special place, which she always hoped to mine and to strike it big.
There's riches on the mountain. It just wasn't in precious metals. It just turned out to be in, you know, paleontology.
McDonald thinks her dad would approve of the family selling the land to the U.S. Forest Service this year and would hope the public enjoys it.
And don't screw it up.
Luckily, the tracks are encased in a sturdy mix of sandstone and quartz, and now of federal protection. The trail's gnarliness may also help keep them safe. Even after the pathway to the tracks levels off a bit, it's precariously narrow and knee-shakingly high. And it takes us hours for the final break near the ruins of an old cabin more than 9,000 feet up in elevation. With jerky and a payday candy bar to fuel the final push...
So here we are.
The West Gold Hill Dinosaur Track Site. 134 consecutive prints, amorphous bowls in the rock, making what looked like a cursive L. A few other hikers are peering in to these craters of prehistory that for decades only Rick Trujillo and his childhood friends knew about.
I'm astounded how people seem to be interested and they make the effort and come up to see them.
Dinosaurs have long captured humans' imagination, says Julia McHugh. The creatures live in a space between history and legend.
They push the bounds of what's physically possible for an animal to be, how big it can be, you know, how ferocious, how scary it can look.
McHugh doesn't know what dinosaur made these tracks, only that it was a sauropod, plant-eating, with a long neck, a body at least 50 feet in length. She says it's thrilling to imagine the giant beast that once walked right here.
This is the, the monster that is never going to hurt us.
Now only a hike away, albeit a tough one. For Here and Now, I'm Stina Sieg, high above Eurae, Colorado.
And you know, we make this show for you, and we want to do it with you as well. So we're exactly a month away from the election, and both candidates, as you well know, have been releasing more details about their plans to address immigration. Now we have a question for you. What do you want the next president to do about immigration?
Welcome to today's meeting of the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors, October 8, 2024. At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Mark Mofield. Invite him to come forward to the podium. And Pastor Mofield, I invite you to tell us about your church and to then lead us in prayer. When Pastor Mofield is ready to lead us in prayer, I invite all whoso desire to stand for the prayer and then to remain standing for the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome.
Thank you for this invitation and opportunity to be here with you again today. As you said, I'm Mark Mofield. I'm pastor at Melrose Baptist Church. We're located in front of Northside High School. Our church has been at our current location since the early '70s. We are trying our best to serve our community in love and in grace. Right now, we're very excited. We're partnering with four other churches here in the Roanoke Valley with the goal of putting together 1,000 disaster relief cleanup kit buckets to be distributed to southwest Virginia, North Carolina, and other areas impacted by Hurricane Helene, as well as the hurricane that is preparing to hit the state of Florida. And we are collecting items and going to be having a packing party the first Sunday of November, trying to help those that have been impacted by these storms. So we're thankful to be a part of our community. We're thankful to serve our community and serve with our community in so many ways. So thank you for the opportunity to be here today. If I can, I'd like to invite us to have a word of prayer together. Gracious God, as we enter into this time, we pray for your wisdom, for your guidance, for a spirit of discernment and of unity. Lord, we thank you for the gifts of love and grace and mercy that unite us together across language, across experience, across age, across everything that might divide us and reminds us that we are all your beloved children. God, today I join with so many in lifting up those who are still living with the damage and the harm from Hurricane Helene, as well as those in Florida that are preparing, God, for another storm to come through. God, we pray for protection and provision for all those who are in need. We pray for those who are working even now to restore power, to rebuild homes, and to comfort those who are grieving unimaginable losses. And God, we are also mindful of those for whom the storms of life may not be a hurricane, but instead are depression, loneliness, isolation, hunger, hatred. God, we pray that your power would be at work in their lives and in our communities, that, God, together, we might meet the needs of those who are hurting, that we might work for the betterment of our community and of our world, and together that we might see the day of peace that you have promised will come. Lord, we pray your blessing upon our county leaders. Give them all that they need to lead well and to serve well. And God, I pray that together our area might be united in love and grace and that we might be an example to all the world, a light upon a hill, and that, Lord, we might be held together by your presence. I lift this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon. Welcome to our meeting for October 8, 2024. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 7:00 p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV 3, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or to attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on silent. Item A, opening ceremonies. Number one, roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, sir.
Very good. Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. Item one, proclamation expressing the appreciation of the county of Roanoke, Virginia to its sister city, Opole, Poland, for 30 years of sister-city relationship. And before we recognize a couple guests, I want to make a few comments as we introduce these folks visiting with us this week. Last night, we were presented with a certificate on behalf of the sister cities for Roanoke County's 30-year relationship. And it's something that Supervisor Mahoney and I were there to share, as well as staff and Administrator Kaywood. This is the 30th anniversary, and it began in 1995 when Elmer Hodge signed an agreement to become part of the sister-city network. The goal of Sister Cities is to create an exchange of cultural and social information for the enrichment of both communities. Opole is the capital city of the Opole region in Poland. The city council is made up of 25 people. How about that? Opole has a population of 130,000 and covers an area approximately 60 square miles. It has lots to offer. It's a very young and vibrant community, great music in the videos we heard last night, and it makes you kind of want to get over there and visit sometime. And so with that said, at this time, I'd like to recognize folks from the sister cities with Christine Boulass and Mary Jo Fassi. Come forward to the podium. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Mary Jo Fassier, Roanoke Valley Sister Cities President. And we were quite honored yesterday to celebrate this 30th anniversary with Opole, Poland. And we've made some nice acquaintances with these five delegates. And that's what Sister Cities is about. It's a people-to-people organization. And we share many things with Opole, and we enjoy our cultural and artistic exchanges, and maybe some economic exchanges if we, after this visit, we might be inspired or they might be inspired to, to get some economic possible exchanges going on here, investments. So I'll turn it over to Chris. It's Christina Slawikowski, who is the chairperson.
Good afternoon. I'm Christina Boulass Slawikowski. I have worked as chair for the Opole, Poland Committee, part of Roanoke Valley Sister Cities for a very long time. I'm very proud and honored to present the Opole delegation to you that arrived on Sunday from Poland. They will be spending a week with us here, having a very intensive agenda that has been put together by the county, looking at multiple cultural, economic, and institutional items that the county has to offer. So I would like to take time to welcome them individually right now. So it's my distinct honor and pleasure to welcome Mr. Arkadiusz Bisznyewski, who is the mayor of Opole. Should they come to the podium?
Yes, have them come forward. Come on up front here.
Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Machewiecz, who is the deputy mayor of Opole. I'd like to invite Mr. Wukasz Sowada, who is the counselor in Opole. Mr. Wukasz Szwierzak, who is director of promotion in Opole. And last but not least, our wonderful interpreter, Machewiecz, who is director of culture and international relations for Opole. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Have us just stay right there a minute. We want to go ahead and have the clerk read the resolution today.
Proclamation. Proclamation expressing the appreciation of the county of Roanoke, Virginia to its sister city, Opole, Poland, for 30 years of sister-city relationship. Whereas the county of Roanoke, Virginia, United States of America, and the city of Opole, Poland, began their warm friendship to promote international understanding in 1993 through the Virginia Local Government Management Association. And whereas, as communication prospered and the county of Roanoke hosted a delegation from Opole, it was suggested the county of Roanoke and Opole enter into a sister-city relationship. And whereas, for the last 30 years, the county of Roanoke and Opole have remained in communication to host delegations and exchange students, thus implementing a mutual cultural exchange program. And whereas, the county of Roanoke is thrilled to host a delegation from Opole, and whereas the county of Roanoke looks forward to showcasing county departments and regional highlights throughout the remainder of the delegation's stay, and whereas the Board of Supervisors wishes to support more prosperous years of cultural exchange and international engagement. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County that the Board of Supervisors welcomes the Opole delegation to Roanoke County, Virginia, and the board appreciates 30 years of friendship and international prosperity and looks forward to continuing this beneficial cultural exchange.
Very good. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? They're being done. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to invite the mayor of Opole to say a few words here. And, and I think there's going to be a video at this time. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go ahead and invite you to say a few... We're going to watch the video first before... Watch the video first. Okay, here we go.
Opole, the capital city of Opole, where a township occupies the area of 97 square kilometers. More than 340,000 people live within the boundaries of the Opole agglomeration. Opole is a city of the young. Every third inhabitant is between 19 and 39 years of age. Universities are a very important asset of the city. There are six of them, with 31,000 students altogether. Every year, the labor market welcomes 9,000 graduates. Vocational schools are also very dynamic in the city. 75% of Opole inhabitants speak foreign languages. The food industry is also booming in Opole. Nutrizia and Zota are European leaders in the production of baby food and dairy products. Since 2011, Opole has been holding the National Food Industry Congress, which presents major sectoral companies and institutions. Opole is the home of ITACA, the largest travel agency in Poland. It is also the home of CELT, domestic leader in the production of rollerblades. Opole is an attractive location for the modern business services industry. Among other companies, Cap Genemi, Future Process, and Opt Data have opened their branch offices here. We can offer attractive office space at competitive lease prices. Our portfolio will soon be extended with further several thousand square meters. The city has implemented more than 50 local area development plants. From the very first contact with municipal officials, each and every investor is handled individually. Opole subzone of Valbzik Special Economic Zone is developing in a very resilient manner. Here, among other companies, there is IFM EcoLink, a world leader in industrial automation that is developing its activities and launching a research and development center. The very first manufacturing plant to be located in Europe has been launched by Polaris, the American manufacturer of cross-country vehicles, snowmobiles, and motorcycles. The Belgian-French joint venture Pasta Food Company has been manufacturing frozen lasagna. Polish companies, too, among them, Pez et Stelmach, Art Odlev, and OG Ifor, have been developing their activities within the zone. Moreover, an exhibition and congress center was opened in the city to hold trade fairs, conferences, and industry-specific events. In Opole, there is a science and technology park which combines education and business. We are building new roads, bridges, and buildings. We are also renovating sports stadiums and erecting sports centers. We are one of the country leaders in investing and utilizing funds from the European Union. We are one of the most attractive, yet cheapest, cities for investors. Opole is one of the best Polish cities to live in. According to social forecasts, Opole inhabitants live on one of the highest civilizations levels. They feel safe, are become stressed at least, but tend to be very active.
Thank you.
Drodzy przyjaciele, po pierwsze chciałbym wyrazić podziękowania za to, że pamiętacie o naszym mieście i że od 30 lat darzycie nas swoją przyjaźnią.
Dear friends, first of all, I'd like to express my thanks for your invitation, for your friendship, and for being in cooperation and partnership with us for 30 years.
Zaczęliśmy od filmu, żeby pokazać, że wiele nas łączy. Co prawda nie mamy tak pięknej przyrody wokół Opola, ale jesteśmy miastem dynamicznym, miastem stawiającym na naukę i przedsiębiorczość.
We started with the movie to give an overview of our city and to show you that we have a lot in common. Although we don't have so much natural beauty in Opole, we put pressure on innovation and dynamic development.
Opole jest miastem, które korzysta ze swojego świetnego położenia w centrum Europy. Przyciąga wielu mieszkańców z okolicznych miejscowości do siebie. Jest miastem, które bardzo dynamicznie rozwija się, co jest doceniane w Polsce. Jesteśmy wysoko oceniani w różnych rankingach.
Opole is taking advantage of its great location right in the center of Europe, being well-connected with other cities and European capitals. And we are doing our best to attract people to come to our city, to study there and then to stay there and to work there and to live there.
Podczas naszej wizyty związanej z piękną rocznicą, którą świętujemy, mamy okazję poznać bliżej Roanoke County i zobaczyć, jak wiele mamy możliwości rozwijania tego, co przez 30, co 30 lat temu rozpoczęliśmy.
During our visit here in Roanoke, we get many opportunities to look for some more cooperation opportunities and make plans for the future.
Ze mną członkami delegacji są osoby, które na co dzień odpowiadają za rozwój miasta, za naukę, za kulturę, a także za świetną promocję.
With me today are people who are great experts in being in charge of education, culture, business, and promotion.
To jest dla nas doskonała okazja, żeby poznać osobiście partnerów z Roanoke County i zapoczątkować różne działania, które, myślę, w najbliższych latach rozwiną jeszcze bardziej naszą przyjaźnię.
So once again, it's a great opportunity to meet our friends from Roanoke in person, which is quite valuable, because it makes even easier to make plans for the future and push our cooperation even further.
Myślę, że w ostatnich dniach powiedzieliśmy sobie sporo. I jeszcze raz, na koniec, chciałbym bardzo serdecznie podziękować za ogromną życzliwość, jaką czujemy, wielkie wsparcie i zaangażowanie, które wykazujecie państwu w rozwijanie naszego partnerstwa.
Over the last days, we've managed to discuss many issues, exchange views, practices, and so on. And I'd like to thank you very much for your hospitality, for your kindness, for your involvement in this cooperation. And we have great hopes for the future too.
Wszystko, co najlepsze przed nami. Myślę, że czas już nie podsumowywać 30 lat, które za nami, ale myśleć o tym, co w kolejnych latach. I oczywiście, w mieniu wszystkich mieszkańców, chciałbym bardzo serdecznie zaprosić delegację z Roanoke do przyjazdu do Opola, żebyśmy teraz my mogli przedstawić atuty, które mamy, które mogą być wykorzystane wspólnie przez nas.
So I believe that all the best is still ahead of us. So we should now focus on the future. And I should start with inviting a delegation from Roanoke to visit Opole in the near future, so that we can show you our lovely city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of Roanoke County, the Board of Supervisors, may I like to present to you a key to the county?
Wow! Thank you very much.
We'll have a gift for you.
Oh.
We've left it unpacked.
Okay.
To build the tension.
I see.
You can see what is it.
Do you want us to open this now?
Yes.
Let's do that over here. Let's. Oh, you can take that in the picture if you want to. Oh, yeah.
We'll have to put them in between us.
Oh, beautiful.
Right there. That's beautiful.
Very nice. Thank you very much. We want this in a picture too? Yeah, okay. How about the resolution? I don't think we can hold that. Yeah, we can do that. Someone can hold that.
Phil, if you can get in the middle there.
Lovely picture. What do you think, Amy?
You look great.
I bet you said that to all the guys.
Richard, get over here and get in this picture. Come on, we got to get Richard in. You come over here in the middle, next to the mayor. Come on. Can we move down a little bit?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah, you take the poll of proclamation. I got the picture. There you go.
Let's get one. And Joe in here. And I'm going to scooch it a little more.
Just turn sideways. There you go. Perfect. There you go. That's how we get thin. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Lovely picture.
This is beautiful.
Yeah. Let you hold on to that. Very good. Oh, okay. How nice. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or whatever. Thank you for your time, Mark. Yes. Yeah, you got it. Very good. Oh, thank you.
Historic house in the city center.
Oh, okay, and a magnet too. Oh, how nice. Very good. Almost matches her up.
Yes. Okay, Market Square. Very nice. Yeah.
Sure, that's a good idea, a beautiful day like this. Absolutely. Thank you all very much. Moving on to item C2 on our agenda. Proclamation declaring October 20th through 26th, 2024 as Red Ribbon Week in the County of Roanoke. Chair recognizes Adam T. Neal, Director, Roanoke Area Youth Substance Abuse.
Hi, good afternoon. That was a tough act to follow, so. I was dealing with international relations today, but. Yeah, I'm with the Roanoke Area Youth Substance Abuse Coalition. And again, this year, we are happy to partner with Roanoke County Schools as well as everybody else in our catchment area to celebrate Red Ribbon Week. This year's theme for the schools is "Life is a Movie: Film Drug Free." And so it's a lot of Hollywood and movie-style themes going on throughout the schools. And we're happy to have our six different contests, again, celebrating and highlighting all the hard work the schools put into this week to educate our youth about substance abuse issues. As we all know, we continue to have a fentanyl and addiction crisis throughout our area. And, you know, the kids are our future, the youth are our future. And educating them on these issues, on these important issues, is paramount to getting it as early as possible. And we're happy to partner with the schools to help do that and to highlight all the hard work they do doing that throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation we'd like to present to you. With that said, we'll ask the clerk to please read the proclamation.
Proclamation declaring October 20th through October 26th, 2024 as Red Ribbon Week in the County of Roanoke. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages. And whereas, it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas, the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs. And whereas, the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 20th through 26th, 2024. And whereas, business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organization, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas, the County of Roanoke further encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long. Now therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, on behalf of all of its citizens, do hereby proclaim October 20th through 26th, 2024 as Red Ribbon Week in Roanoke County, Virginia.
Thank you. Is there a motion that we adopt this proclamation?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. At this time, we'd like to get a picture in front of the board up there. Come on up.
Hope I took the lens cap off.
Can't see with it on.
Can't see with it on. There we go. Don't mind me, I do this professionally. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And thank you. Moving on to item D, new business. A resolution of support for kidney transplant services provided by the Corillian Clinic at Corillian Roanoke Memorial Hospital. Chair welcomes Richard Kaywood, County Administrator.
Captain Name is Chairman, Members of the Board. Recently, Corillian Clinic approached us seeking a resolution of support for a certificate of public need for kidney transplant services at Corillian Roanoke Memorial Hospital. The CDC estimates that about 1 in 7 U.S. adults have chronic kidney disease, and it's the ninth-leading cause of death in the country. And currently, there's about 2,300 Virginians on a waiting list for kidneys. And currently, if you live in our area, depending on where you are in the Corillian service area, you're somewhere between 2 to 4 hours minimum travel to receive those services. So Corillian would like to begin offering these services. And staff would recommend your adoption of the proposed resolution.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of support for kidney transplant services provided by Corillian Clinic at Corillian Roanoke Memorial Hospital. Whereas Corillian Clinic is applying to the Commonwealth of Virginia for a certified of public need, COPN, excuse me, certificate of public need, COPN, to bring kidney transplant services to southwest Virginia through its flagship hospital, Corillian Roanoke Memorial Hospital. And whereas, the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors wishes to improve access to high-quality kidney transplant services for its residents and other citizens of the region. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, estimate that 1 in 7 U.S. adults have chronic kidney disease, the ninth-leading cause of death in the country. And whereas, in Virginia, there are currently over 2,300 residents on the state's waitlist for kidneys. And whereas, patients in Roanoke and southwest Virginia reside hours from a transplant center, making it difficult to access critical services, resulting in long waitlist times and care and complications. And whereas, there is a growing need for kidney transplant services among southwest Virginia's population, and these local services will allow more cost-effective and timely care. And whereas, these services will increase the number of medical professionals and healthcare employment opportunities in the county. And whereas, Corillian Roanoke Memorial Hospital already provides highly complex medical services that include a Level 1 Trauma Center, a Level 3 Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, and 85 medical specialties. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, supports the plans and efforts of Corillian Clinic to establish kidney transplant services at Corillian Roanoke Memorial Hospital. Be it further resolved that the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors enthusiastically supports the application of Corillian Clinic for a certificate of public need, COPN, to bring kidney transplant services to Roanoke and southwest Virginia, and congratulates Corillian on its recognition by U.S. News and World Report as the highest-ranked hospital in southwest Virginia and one of the top hospitals in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item E, first reading of ordinances. Number 1, ordinance amending Chapter 21 Taxation, Article 3, Real Estate Taxes, Division 3, Exemption for Elderly and Disabled Persons of the Roanoke County Code. Chair recognizes Jason Peters, Commissioner of Revenue, for the first reading and request for a second reading. Mr. Peters?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Board. As many of you know, since taking office in January, I've been working through a lot of the processes in the Commissioner's office to better serve our citizens that we all represent. These processes take time, but I'm pleased to announce there is being progress, progress is being made. But today, I want to focus on the area I think Chairman North brought to me back in February. I know that we've had a number of conversations one-on-one and work sessions regarding elderly relief, tax relief. And so today, I want to talk about Chapter 21 of our taxation. We have held a number of 56, 566, I believe is the number, for our income limit for someone seeking elderly tax relief. I think through our conversations with the Board, the Board has requested that we move that number to 60,000. We are going to maintain the $200,000 in assets, excluding their principal residence. And the only other thing we really changed regarding that is beginning. The deadline to file previously was February 1 to March 15. We are extending that to January 1 because our staff, they do send out the notifications around the end of December. So they, most of our citizens are getting it by the 1st of January. So there's no reason if they're getting it on January 4th and they can fill it out while they need to hold it to February 1 to turn it in. So we are going to open that window up a little longer. The other thing that I was, we were going to make an adjustment on coming off of the elderly tax is for our disabled veterans. We noticed when we went through Section 21 of our ordinances that there were a couple of things in there regarding when they can apply for their, the disabled vet can apply for their exemption. There was a timeline that's been in our ordinance for a number of years. That timeline does not, should not be in there because under state code, if a veteran receives their exemption in September, they can come right then and get the exemption from Roanoke County. So we did do some modification in that section to remove that. I do want to thank Emma, our internal auditor, along with Peter. And I did bring Chelsea Thrasher from my office, who handles this, if there's any questions. But that's kind of, kind of all of it in a nutshell there for you. I don't know if Peter has anything or not. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Peters?
Could you repeat that date? January 1st to what?
March 15.
March 15.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
We added another 30 days to it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, is there a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance and the scheduled second reading for October 22nd, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call a roll. Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 2, ordinance authorizing issuance of not to exceed 75 million general obligation school funds of the County of Roanoke, Virginia, and providing for the form and details thereof. Chair recognizes Laurie Gierhard, Director, Finance and Management Services, for the first reading and request for a second reading. Laurie, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Board. Today, I present the proposed ordinance for your approval, which authorizes the issuance of up to 75 million in literary loan funds for the construction of the Career and Technical Education Center, the renovations of Glenn Cove and W.E. Kundath Elementary Schools, and the cost of issuing the bonds. The proposed structure of the bonds are general obligation bonds through the Commonwealth of Virginia for the benefit of the Literary Fund in the amount of up to 75 million or 25 million each for each project, with an annual interest rate not to exceed 3% with a term of maturity not to exceed 21 years. Funding for these school projects was included in the fiscal year 2025-2034 Capital Improvement Program and is also a part of the Memorandum of Understanding between the county and the schools regarding joint capital funding. Loan applications for the two elementary schools were approved on September 26th by the Virginia Board of Education. Upon final approval from the county, county staff will coordinate with the appropriate staff at the Commonwealth to close and initiate the first draw against the two elementary school loans. We anticipate the loan application for the Career and Technical Education Center to be either approved be either approved in October or December at one of the VBOE meetings, at which time county staff will coordinate the close of the loan and initiate the first draw from the Commonwealth. The final plans have not been submitted yet as the schools are still working on that, but the application itself has been accepted, so it's just a matter of getting those final things and it being approved by the VBOE. So with that, staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and scheduling the second reading for October twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Any questions, Laurie?
Not a question, Mr. Chairman, but just, I know we have, we as a board have worked through this over the past couple of years in terms of trying to fund these capital improvements. Just a reminder, if you look at, I think it's J three on our agenda under our reports, we show what our current debt limit is. This kicks us up to two hundred and twenty-two mil. Just a reminder of, this is the debt that will be due, and as Ms. Gerhardt indicates, these are general obligation bonds, and those are a little bit different than revenue bonds. If we can't pay, then the state can come in theoretically and force us to increase our real estate tax rate to pay the principal and interest on these. Just, just a reminder. I'll be the Grinch before Christmas. Thank you.
Well, at least you're consistent, Mr. Grinch.
(laughing).
Thank you very much. Is anyone else got any fodder to add to that statement?
(laughing).
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a second reading for October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four?
Second.
We have a motion. Mr. Radford seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you. Item F, public hearing. Public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding the refinancing of lease transactions that originally financed various capital projects for the county and authorizing the continued leasing of certain county-owned property, the execution and delivery of prime leases, and local lease acquisition agreement and financing leases, and other related actions in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section fifteen dot two dash twenty-six oh six. Chair recognizes Laurie Gerhardt again.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This item is to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comment regarding the refinancing of lease transactions that originally financed various capital projects for the county by issuing Virginia Resource Authority Series two thousand and thirteen B and two thousand and fourteen A lease revenue bonds. The state requires a public hearing to be held in advance of the issuance of any bonds by a locality. This public hearing satisfies this requirement. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to satisfy the state code requirements and receive citizen comment on the refinancing of portions of the two thousand and thirteen B and two thousand and fourteen A Virginia Resource Authority lease revenue bonds.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Gerhardt? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone here to speak? Anyone's here to speak? That said, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Item G, appointments. Any board members have an appointment that's not been given to the clerk and included in the board report for agenda item G?
I do.
Well, what do you know? What you got?
I knew he'd say that. I have spoke to Rick Pavarsky, and he's willing to serve in the Windsor Hills District on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Very good. You got that, Rhonda?
Yes, sir.
And I got his email address. You can send him information.
Thank you.
Very good. So we'll approve that along with the other two. Is that correct, Mr. Lebacke?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, with that said, is there a motion to approve the list of appointments set forth in the board report and the one named by Mr. Radford?
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item H, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form of forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Any board member wish to remove an item from consent agenda for discussion? That said, having heard none, is there a motion to adopt all matters on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of all the items on our consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item I, citizens' comments and communications. Any citizens wanting to address the board that have not submitted a form? Anyone submit a form? No, okay. Moving on to item J, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the reports that have been included with the agenda under item J?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item K, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Mahoney?
Just one item, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Roanoke College. We had a very nice celebration dinner last night at Roanoke College with our, with our visitors from Poland. I believe there were, what do you think, Mr. Chairman, about eighty, eighty people? Eighty people were there, many of them very active in the Sister Cities Program in the Roanoke region. And I just want to thank Roanoke College. They put on a very nice event for us. We had a very nice meal. With that, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of items. The first thing I want to talk about is we just had the Bit Mountain Fall Festival last weekend. We squeezed it in between the hurricane. We were able to have all those events outside. There must have been a thousand people up there. I made it early on, went up there, and the community was so appreciative of Allen and the Department of Parks and Rec for helping out, run that. Kelly did a big job up there, assistant with, with Allen. Just, they're looking forward to next year, so glad to see that that was success, and the weather stayed bright and sunny, and we had the SoundCloud band there at five o'clock, and they brought out the crowd. One other item I want to bring up, we're always talking about awards that are, that we've received in the county, and I just want to read, let you know of an award that was recently received last week. The Virginia Association of Planning District has announced Mr. Phil North as the winner of its two thousand and twenty-four Gordon P. Nixon Award, and we have it right here. This award was presented at a recent meeting of the Roanoke County Allegheny Regional Commission, of which Mr. North is a member. The Dixon Award recognizes an executive director of VAPDC Commissioner or PDC Commissioner who has provided leadership and made outstanding contributions to promote the concept of regionalism in Virginia. So as a former Norfolk Southern employee, Mr. North, of course, has a keen interest in transportation issues. During a recent state-level discussion about potential changes to smart scale, Mr. North was a leader in coordinating messaging among our rural and urban communities. He regularly engaged other CTPB members, Transportation Board members, to advocate for our region's needs and kept them abreast of the CTP and General Assembly issues surrounding potential policy changes and engaged with our staff to develop strategies to support the regional goals. And with his leadership, we were able to defeat some of those items that were going to potentially harm our ability to get smart scale. So for sixteen years, the Gordon M. N. Dixon was an outstanding example of a regional leader while serving as an executive director for two planning commissions, the New River Valley and the Fifth Planning Commission. He sincerely believed in regional planning and community development. Following his death, they established the Dixon Award to recognize executive directors and commissioners who display exceptional dedication to the regional planning vision of Virginia. And there's a bunch of other stuff about Phil North, and we don't need to go over there. (laughing). But congratulations, Phil, on your award of the being named a Dixon Award winner.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So who went in my office and got this?
(laughing). It was a setup.
(laughing). Thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
You've said a lot. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I was pleasantly surprised when I was reading, reading over the agenda, and someone mentioned my name, and I'm like, what's that? I didn't even know it was coming. I didn't even know there was a Gordon Dixon Award. And I never did know Gordon Dixon for sure, but that's quite an honor, and I appreciate that. That's what happens when you let me go to Richmond too much, and you let me go traveling off around the county and the region. But anyway, that certainly is a nice recognition. Okay, Ms. Shepherd?
Well, first of all, congratulations, Phil, on your award. I've only got a couple of things this week. One is I was invited to speak at the Mount Pleasant Lions Club Dinner last week, and boy, what, they home-cooked meal, it was really great. And it was nice to hear all the feedback. Again, everyone is thrilled to death with their recycle bins in Mount Pleasant. And we also were able, I want to thank Chief Poindexter for getting a police officer, they were doing a road cleanup, the Leo Club, over the weekend, and he actually had an officer out there with lights on to slow any traffic down to make sure no one got hurt. So thank you, Chief Poindexter. Also, I was really excited to be able to go to the ribbon cutting for William Bird High School, where they finished the remodel, and boy, does it look different from when I graduated in nineteen eighty-seven. But it is absolutely beautiful, and they've done a great job with it. So thank you to the school board for all the work and everyone that worked on that. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Hooker?
I just have one quick comment, and it's really just a reminder to all Roanoke County citizens to vote. You have the opportunity now to go and vote early, and we have two places where you can go to vote, either with the Roanoke County Elections Office or with the Brambleton Center. It's open Monday through Friday, eight to four, and there's two Saturdays coming up on Saturday, October twenty-second, and November second. Both places will also offer some Saturday hours. So just remember to take your responsibility, privilege, to vote seriously and take care of that. There's an opportunity to do it early now, and I suggest you do it early. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I'll echo that too, because I don't want to stand in line two hours and forty-five minutes like I did seven years ago, I believe.
Oh, gosh.
Only item I have to share is one that Ms. Shepherd, Mitt and District Supervisor and myself are going to have a Bon Sac Orchards Community Meeting on October the twenty-first at six o'clock at Bon Sac Elementary School, and our road show will be talking about economic development, planning, transportation, capital projects, and general county budget informations. We look forward to that coming up on the twenty-first of October, and more on that later. That said, we'll now move into work session under item L. Number one, work session to update the county board supervisors on the status of broadband projects within Roanoke County. Madeline Handling, Community Engagement Director, will lead us into that discussion. Momentarily, the board will recess to the third floor for the work session. However, before doing so, I would like to move that the board go into closed session upon the completion of the work session. Item M, closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia. I move that we go into closed session pursuant to the Code, Section two dot two, thirty-seven eleven, subparagraph A, Art Five of the Code of Virginia, for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of business or industry's interest in locating or expanding the facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business location or expansion in each of the five magisterial districts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. The board will now recess to the third floor for the work session, and following that, to closed session. Thank you very much.
But Councilor Stansin says autonomy for Ladakh will not necessarily solve issues of land and development near the border. Because of the ongoing military tensions, he says security is the most important thing right now.
It is a perception fight, I think. China has a different light on perception, and India has a different...